Yeah, possibly, depending on which one he orders. We're discussing a vinyl or a... He said he couldn't get it and asked us to steal, yeah.
Yeah, Chris, what happens, God forbid he can't make the date we give him? Do we...
Typically, I would sign a complaint and he'd have to go to court, municipal court.
And the consequence of that would be a...
Consequence would be paying the court cost, a fine, and then the court would order him to complete the project to standard. I'd have to follow up on that then. She typically would give thirty days.
I think we have to do the resolution here in sixty days.
Do we need that resolution now?
And that's what you would be going to turn to. We all do. I am whatever you want to do.
I said sixty days.
It was something made by Councilman Richard that we passed a resolution for the enforcement of the actions on the property located at 601 West Third and Second. Councilman Mott, any further discussion?
Sixty days.
The day of the notices.
From the day he signs for that notice. It'll go out certified mail. He'll return receipt requesting. So when I get the card back, it'll have the date and his signature on it and be sixty days from the date he signs for that card.
Okay. This letter will be going out this week, kind of soon. This letter will be going out...
Well, late this week, early next, yeah.
Very soon, I can't...
Yeah, yeah.
We have to publish it first before we can send it out in the mail. Last time it took about a week.
Any further discussion? Manny, would you take a roll call, please?
Gignler?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passed. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And we had a... I handed out the chain on the third page, second paragraph. We went into more detail on what we passed. And this is a vague compromise, Mr. Faggins requested more time. So that was added into the...
Mayor, I have one question. Not that I'm screwed, but we got three thousand dollars of gravel. Where's this backlog of this gravel? That's a lot of gravel.
Was that down the power plant?
Yes, it was. Some of it went on the parking lot there that pump truck uses.
And then up around the cooling tower.
That's where I thought it was.
I was just curious where the backlog was.
Man?
I see that we paid web provision fees to RJ Jackson and we paid person fees to JMT Company. I see. Roughly the same number.
Exactly the same person.
Same person.
No, I think it was just a mistake.
Who is paying the...
JMT is the person company, huh?
RJ's a junior in high school.
Yeah, see, I don't know.
Yeah, he's the...
It was just the soccer event.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I would say they're not paying four hundred dollars.
Yeah. Get into this with...
Oh, and on that, she voided it, actually, on there. If you look over to the right side.
Right, I say void.
So she caught it.
Lloyd, do you have any questions?
I do. Under Network Plus, we have a computer and software purchase and a train purchase for the PD coming out of Fund Thirty.
Yeah. The drug forfeiture funds.
Fund Thirty is... That's not it.
I realize that. It has a spending authority on it, and in order to use that money, I have to reallocate the funds. So I put it in the CIP fund. It's just gonna be a wash, is what it's gonna be.
Okay. I thought that the police department could spend money out of there.
They can. They can, and that's what they're doing. It's just it also, the actual drug forfeiture fund has a budget, the spending authority on it, and that was the only...
But we can transfer that money out, but we can't spend it out of there?
Yeah, it's basically a reallocation. It's not a transfer. It's reallocating. We did consult the auditors, and they said that that was fine to do. So...
Okay. You're gonna have to put a lot more notes in here, because that's impossible to track through a budget. You're just... Money goes everywhere. And Prairie Fire Coffee. Pretty healthy chunk of coffee. And I figured it out, went back through and passed.
Well...
And it's total of eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars so far this year in coffee.
I'll check on that. Fifty-three, forty-one. I don't know. I'll have to check on that.
Could we buy that coffee and buy... Could we spend that kind of money and get tax money for our improvement?
Well, when we buy coffee from people, they actually come here to do it, so it'd be a destination tax. So we actually do get the sales tax money from it.
Manny, where's the... Where's the... On that coffee thing? Is it just here in the industrial building that coffee's used? Or is it another location?
No, it's at a location.
Second. If we move by Councilman Mott, that we add the minutes and appropriation in its entirety, second by Councilman Mott. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Gignler?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Good.
Thank you. Question, please. Next item on the agenda is the fire department officer, and it's been submitted by the election of the officer.
Wasn't that part of the consent agenda?
I'm sorry.
Wasn't that a part of the consent agenda?
Okay, well, I had it as a... I put it as a second item, I'm sorry. But anyway, that's fine, it's passed, but on the consent agenda in its entirety, so everybody knows, it's Chief Steve Rugg, First Assistant Chief Blake Miller, Second Assistant Chief Charlie Ryan, Secretary Steve Preer, Treasurer Randy Strudy, First Captain Eric Dunston, Second Captain Dale Lewis, First Truck Driver Jim Christman, Second Truck Driver Jim Crone, Third Driver Josh Bell, First Trustee Alan Mahoney, Second Trustee Nathan Lohr.
I make a motion, we accept the officers at the fire department, their election.
We accepted this in the consent agenda in its entirety, just on the motion before. I just missed the fire department. Thanks for that. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-one forty-seven, the franchise agreement with Cunningham Communications. Any questions to come?
This first one is for cable.
Okay. For the cable.
What's the duration of this?
Ten years.
Ten years.
What's the approximate revenue?
It's probably gonna be difficult to tell, because they used to combine them. Now we're separating cable and telephone and ham, so...
Yeah, there's one franchise agreement before, and I think we were at three percent.
Yeah, so a little less than double.
And I don't know what we... yearly had a budget for that. I mean, we projected some number before that. Now it's gonna be split into two ones, and I don't know what...
It comes in as revenue. Totally.
Yes, yeah.
Budget?
It does. But you go from three to five, that's now two different... Split two different ways. I don't know how much revenue they get from each source.
One additional comment I had that got brought up during the work session was the access channel, Channel Twelve, Section Ten. That was actually in our old agreement and will continue in this one. Cunningham has taken over. It's no longer a concentrator handling that, kind of handle that channel entirely. And you'll start to see over time that there will be no more advertisements or anything on that. It'll be strictly government, public, and educational use, which is what it's intended for. And that's gonna take some time, because obviously they have advertising contracts that they have to work through, so that's just it.
Is public access the correct title for that? A lot of public access, and you or I can go in and put whatever we want on.
Well, it has to be government, public, for educational, and you have to contact Cunningham, and they put it on there. It has to meet those requirements.
I wasn't sure what it was.
It can't be like...
Garage sale, no long-term account.
Right. No garage sale, no weight loss supplement, no anything like that, so...
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to accept ordinance twenty-one forty-seven, the cable franchise agreement. It's been moved by Councilman Latrell, and we passed ordinance twenty-one forty-seven, the cable franchise agreement with Cunningham Cable. Do I have a second?
Say yes.
Second by Councilman Peterson. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gignler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Addy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-one forty-eight, providing a local phone exchange service agreement with Cunningham Cable. Any questions?
Does this all over cable landline rules?
Yes. It'd be landline.
Is this an increase to the... Have they been paying five or...
No, everything was under an old agreement of three percent, and we've gone to five. And you see on the next one with AT&amp;T, we've also gone to five percent to standardize across the board. Three ordinance twenty-one forty-eight. It's been moved by Councilman Richards, that we approve ordinance twenty-one forty-eight, providing local exchange services on phones with agreement with Cunningham Communication, second by Councilman Brown. Further discussion? No further discussion. Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Gignler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Latrell?
Yes.
Abel?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-one forty-nine, the phone franchise agreement with Southwestern Bell Telephone Company. So the same amount of five percent is...
Accepted.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Gignler, that we accept ordinance twenty-one forty-nine, the franchise agreement with Southwestern Bell. Have a second. Second by Councilman Richards. Any further discussion?
I have a question. So this is basically the same exact franchise, only just a different company can also come and provide. So what are they getting by having this agreement? I mean, if they have a competitor in town with the same agreement, what do they gain from having this?
Well, we're gaining franchise fee.
We're gaining.
They're not gaining.
They get the right to...
It's all for us, right?
Well, I mean, they get the right to have service experience.
Yeah, but it's not exclusive, as a matter of fact. You can't prohibit it. You can't have an exclusive franchise agreement. Same on the cable side. If somebody else wanted to compete, they could. They have the right to do that. So, yeah, we don't give exclusive franchise for any... For whatever reason. Lloyd, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Can someone shed some light on what the difference is between franchise revenue and gross revenue?
Yes. If you will note, in the Cunningham agreement, which is what we started with when I started this process, they... There are certain things on your bill that can be... Have a franchise fee attached, and there are certain things that can't. So if you look in the definition, franchise revenue, that's actually laid out in there. Gross receipt is just a different term for the same thing, except in the phone agreements, you'll see the different things that they can attach a franchise fee to and things that they can't. So it's the same thing, we just use different terms, and that's simply because AT&amp;T sent us their agreement, so we went with that term.
So do we ever go audit their books to make sure they're good?
We can. The agreements allow us to, yeah. Once a year, if you want to.
No further questions? I entertain a motion that we accept. Do we go audit them all? It's been moved. Pardon? There is a motion on the floor in there? Second. Yeah, Lloyd made the motion. Councilman... And then the... Councilman Lloyd made a second. I have a... Any further discussion? No further discussion. Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gignler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Addy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the ordinance twenty-one fifty, the inbound fees.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Was that for ordinance twenty-one forty-nine? So we're talking about...
Yeah, the twenty-one forty-nine...
I didn't make a motion, and that did a second. At least I wrote down Gignler and...
Okay.
Unless I made a mistake.
Now, that one's on me. Correct that. Mr. Gignler made the motion.
Thank you.
Again, next item, ordinance twenty-one fifty, the inbound fee.
I have a question. In the second page, B1, remember, an occupant by vehicles left parked in a street, sitting for forty-eight hours. Is that by all vehicles?
No.
Am I missing something?
Yeah, as I understand it, this doesn't have anything to do with codes. This is not a junk vehicle sitting on the street. This is an impact... A vehicle that's suspect to impound. It's as if the driver of the car was arrested for, let's say, DUI or possession of drugs. Now, what do you do with that vehicle? So it's something of that nature. It's not a code thing.
Okay, so if we go on vacation for a week and leave our car out on the street, we're not gonna have to come back and find that it's been towed or...
No, no. Probably not. That depends.
Maybe yours don't even off.
In regard to this, Chris, if we decided for sure where we're gonna fit these vehicles...
I can't tell you. This is a law enforcement deal, and maybe the administrator of the city attorney can tell you that this does not have to do with me.
Well, currently, we're up there at the North Campus, and they wanna move out of there.
Because I know we discussed it that early. And then I didn't know if we...
Yeah, I'll buy the airport with the property that we got there.
On the east side, the west side of Shelter Belt, right?
Yeah, I think on the east side of that.
The west side.
I'm sorry, the west.
I know structure.
I mean, that's gonna be an ice war for that neighborhood. You know, you want them out of there, because it's an ice war, and it'd be an ice war in that neighborhood, too. My opinion, my neighborhood. Not my backyard. My opinion.
So, well, it's been an issue at the North Campus, too, as people are now building, or well-building that area.
But that's a residential area out there.
Right.
Again, my opinion. There's any other place? Lloyd?
Are we gonna put up a structure to house those, make them secure, like they are not now?
Right. No, we're thinking more of it's just fenced in there, yeah, with security measures there.
But would they go home to their zero air freedom?
Yeah, we're not gonna bring them in.
At the airport, we are. I mean, that farm that's across the private, they're infighting with just being there.
Well, no, that house can stay there. People just can't live there.
You just can't find there.
So...
Don't they park their trucks out there?
We just decided to get rid of the house, because it's a...
Yeah, the house didn't have to be moved. We'll start that by later. I entertain a motion to pass ordinance twenty-one fifty, inbound fees. Moved by Councilman Richards, that we pass ordinance twenty-one fifty, inbound fees. I have a second. Second by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion?
Do we have an official city tower, or is that a couple of brands of the phone?
I think that there's some tow services, actually. Crones and...
I asked Gail, and they're not actually contracted, but typically that's who they use.
Any further discussion? Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gignler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolutions is twenty-four twenty-nine, the Owens addition, the street improvement. That's up there with the Cherry Street addition, I think, with the...
That's correct. Up on Capiturn.
Lloyd, you have a question?
Do we know how many linear feet that is? Or cost per linear foot or circles or...
We do, and it's on the map.
Cost per linear foot? Oh, I don't have those figures right now. Here in front of me, Lloyd. I mean, I don't even remember.
Is that gonna be a block or half-block or somewhere?
Roughly a block with a cul-de-sac, ending shortly before the railroad track right away.
And it's seven inches of normal...
Seven and a half street. Seven, seven and a half, yes.
Where does this go in the order of priority? This year, we're doing Silver Fox, and next year, we're doing Main. It's possibly sturdish. Where does this fall in at the pass?
Well, I don't believe this will compete with Main Street, because you remember, we've talked about that as a different type of project, most likely a contracted project. So this would be... This would be coming after we did the Silver Fox.
How many houses will they be building on that?
We got six lots, if I remember. I know there are at least one that's ready to go. Any way we approve twenty-fourteen dash nine? Questions, Manny? We approve resolution twenty-fourteen dash nine, the Owens addition, the street improvement. Second by Councilman Mott. Any further discussion?
I do have discussion, Captain. You're getting ready to approve this, and I haven't heard of a timeline yet. I mean, we're talking twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, because I do have a lot of concerns about Silver Fox State. You know, we have a contract with you guys, and we got thirty-nine hundred feet of streets that's supposed to be in by the end of two thousand and fourteen. In the contract, it's stipulated that you would be starting the streets by April first. As of now, we're May the seventh, and we haven't done anything. You know, I know that the electrical people are working on their stuff. The water people, I assume, might be working on their stuff. The gas company will not even talk to me until we have curb lines established. We have three lots up there sold. People like to start building one right now, and yet, we have nothing to work with. I'm concerned. You've been working on the approach out there on Highway Twenty-four. I was told it was just gonna get the approach built, and then we'd move over. When I drove by there today, it appears that you're probably gonna go three hundred feet south. It's being flagged and staked for curbing gutter, et cetera. We're talking June, June fifteenth, maybe July first, where you're gonna with that street. You got thirty-nine hundred feet put in for my development, and we haven't even started on it yet. I'm a little bit concerned about which direction you guys are going on these streets. I think there needs to be some discussion. Serious discussion.
Okay, thanks, Lloyd. Any further discussion?
I'd like to hear your response.
Yeah, I mean, this Owens addition, or our Cherry Street, doesn't compete with what he's... I mean, we're not gonna do this in front of that. I mean, that's not where we're building.
Okay, when are we gonna get started on the project that's there for Silver Fox?
Yeah, I don't know what the timeline is on that today. I mean, you know, I know we're committed to doing that this year, but...
How many people you got in your department?
Right now, I'm down to about eight and a half.
Well, most of the time, there's just two guys working up there.
There's been three, three to four up there most of the time.
Not when I was part of it.
What's your timeline to get started on the Silver Fox?
We're looking... We were talking today about going down there and getting started on the dirt work. The problem is, I don't even have a correct set of plans yet for that.
And that's coming from Swat.
Yes.
So we need to begin with them.
And we have been in constant contact with them about that. We got a set of plans yesterday, and we started going through them, and we found several mistakes. So we're trying to get those issues worked out.
Okay, so then, once you get those worked out from Swat, then you'll be starting on the project.
Right. We can actually go ahead and get started on the dirt work now, now that we've gotten away from the highway pavement. We can get some of our equipment down there and get started on the dirt work.
Okay.
Without the plans, but till we have plans, you know, we've got a lot of dirt work down there to do, and we can get started on that without the plans.
Well, sounds like we'll be starting on that pretty quick.
Mike, are you confident we're gonna be able to get that done this year?
We're gonna try.
I have a motion on the floor. No further discussion. Manny, would you take a roll call vote?
Miller?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gignler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Addy?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the resolution twenty-fourteen dash ten, the gas waiver. Any questions or comments?
This is something you do every year, right?
Yes, that's right.
What's the cap?
General accepted, can we? Okay. Any questions?
I move we accept resolution twenty-fourteen dash ten.
I have a second. I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-fourteen dash ten by Councilman Mott, and second by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Addy?[1776.12] Oddie?
Yes.
Abel? Richard?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Gignler?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda in formal action is a special permit license for the Chamber of Commerce for Memorial Weekend on May the twenty-third from five a.m. Questions, Congress?
Do we have the alcohol at the...
There will be, if you guys approve it, we would like to have a beer garden cordoned off down by the Eagles. We have spoke with the Eagles Club to arrange with them. We would mark off, however, two thousand square yards, or whatever we need to mark off, for a beer garden. However, that's up to you guys, if you would allow that. If not, then they would be able to go inside the Eagles to get a drink.